Okay, let's all rise and pledge the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome again, everybody. It's mid-November now, and welcome to the November 13, 2017 Village of Red Hook Board Meeting. Let me just switch. As a rule, we have just any reminders for audience participants. Better if you grab the mic when you want to talk, so when the time comes. Thank you. Could do, to open the meeting, I thought we'd do the minutes review. There were a batch of three this past month, two really in October, then we had a meeting November 3rd, special meeting to work on a truck bond and some other details. They've been circulated, the main minute meetings, the 19th minute and then the November 3rd. I've been through them and reviewed them, and off to you folks. Were there any additions, alterations, or corrections from your perspectives? I would move that we accept those minutes.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
And as far as business for tonight, we're going to change our schedule a little bit. I've talked to our experts, we're going to be here, and we're going to move our public hearings on the sewer use law and what we're calling the best value law, that's a procurement practices law we're talking about. We're going to have to move them to the December 11th meeting, so rather than entertain comments for our regular attendees, you can wait till the 11th of December. And then what we'll do in the regular session of our meeting will, we have redrafted those particular resolutions to get them dealt with in more formal fashion, so we'll forego that part of the night tonight, which will then lead us to our normal cycle of reporting. Treasurer's report goes first, so Cindy, do you have your numbers there?
Account balances. General fund, $693.37.51.
I think you said $693.
Six hundred thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars, thirty-seven dollars and fifty-one cents. Did I get that right? Water fund, $203,953.89. Trust and agency, $25,278.62. Materials management, $7,369.68. Petty cash, $68.90. Village Green, $4,136.88. Hardscrabble, $5,488.34. And health insurance, $4,967.63. General fund monthly expenses, $262,749.71, which is high because I paid the retirement for police and employees.
Do we also have some building principal interest in there? I thought I saw-
Yes, we did. I'm sorry, yeah. Yeah, building, yeah, they were big ones also. Water fund balance, $46,870.29. Trust and agency, $25,278.62. And materials management, $3,370.26.
Okay, so just to be sure, on that first one, at first for general fund balance, gave me a heart attack, but I've seen it-
$693,037.51.
I'd seen it in print earlier, and we monitor it quite frequently, but I didn't want it to be confused with the petty cash balance, which appears further down. So anyway, Cindy mentioned two things. I do remember going through the vouchers, and I think it was the principal interest on some building payments, and then, once a year, we pay the police fire retirement pension numbers and the employee, the regular general employee retirement employment numbers. And they did both combine, come in within the budgets that we had projected back last March, so that's a good thing.
Yeah, they're very accurate.
What that means is, we look at projections of payroll, and we've stayed within it, and therefore the retirement system, it seems to have stabilized too with the stock market strengthening. They're not doing those wild variations in the percents we have to pay in. But anyway, I think the report makes sense. Is there a motion to approve the treasurer's report?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion, all favor?
Aye.
Looks like I come up next here with the police report, and what we do have in front of us is, for October, the normal printouts and top sheet. It's like a total of 381 incidents. Boils down to 282 in the Village of Red Hook, 95 in the Town of Red Hook, and four in the Village of Tivoli. As far as tickets resulting from the patrols, we have a total of 113 breaks out. Village of Red Hook, 61, that includes three parking tickets, and the Town of Red Hook, 52. Arrests, 20, 13 in the village, and seven in the town. We did convey some news to the board at a meeting. The Town of Red Hook is on a calendar year, fiscal year, so they've just, I think, their last meeting approved their 2018 budget, and they have agreed to put some more money toward village patrols in the town, so there's some more money available for our budget there too, coming in January, so, just so you all know that. And usually Brent reports on Red Hook together. You could say that they did have a meeting this past week, but they switched it from a 4:00 PM time at the last minute to a 9:00 AM time, which I could not make, nor could Jen Dar, so they set up another one for sometime in pretty early December, as I recall. Did you see that email, Jen? Did you see something today? I know I responded to it and put it in my calendar, but well, nothing to update you on from that meeting. And then Brent usually reports that out in his reports. I think that's it from that line, too, in the committee report, so why don't we go to Mr. Trustee Trapp on his segment?
Cool. Okay.
I would remind you, Jay, last month, you might recall, we did not have the detail from September, and we do now have that, I don't know if you wanted to-
I do have it in front of me.
So if you wanted to just mention that, we have October.
I'll go over that as well, yes. This is the report that was missing at last month's meeting, so this information is for September 2017. There were eight building permits issued, six certificates of occupancy issued, three certificates of compliance issued, and one municipal search was conducted. No orders to remedy, no stop work, no court appearances. The planning board meeting, September 14th, there were four items of business, an extension of an approval, signage approval, site plan approval granted, and public hearing for application for property. And zoning board had no business in September, and we will press to October here, where 11 building permits were issued, two certificates of occupancy, no certificates of compliance, and two municipal searches were conducted, two orders to remedy were issued. And the planning board, let's see, had three items of business, conditional preliminary and final plat approval, sign approval, and two sign approvals, actually. No business for the ZBA once again, and the amount of money tendered for the month of October was $1,855, which is a pretty good amount there. Couple of things, we've had our, two of our, our three planning federation classes complete November 29th is the final for us. It's the comp plan and comprehensive plan and zoning and how they work together. Anybody that's interested in any of this information, the past presentations, if you go to the Dutchess County Planning Federation website, you can find digital versions of those PowerPoint presentations there, if you want to download them and keep them for your records or spike your memory from time to time. And I, Ed, I don't know whether we're going to do anything about it, but the DOT and their $40 million and all, we're going to get into that later on, or just-
Why don't you go now? You want to go now a little bit?
Yeah, it's real brief. A couple of the other municipalities in which I work got this same communication from the DOT for the pedestrian safety projects, and it's a statewide pedestrian safety action plan. And it was announced in June of 2016, and it's a call for pedestrian safety projects, and it's $40 million, and it's the Federal Highway Safety Improvement Fund. So, well, you know, the aggravation of dealing with that sort of money-
Yes, sir.
-can be a little frustrating, but you know, when there's free money out there, you feel like you should at least reach out for some of it when you can. And I guess Ed had looked at some things, and we, there was some discussion about sidewalks along Benner, because you do see a lot of walkers along that road, and the town-village line is somewhere there, so if we got serious about that, we'd have to figure the logistics of placing a sidewalk along that way, raised, not, you know, not raised flush, and probably to the town line, maybe, maybe some more of those rapid flashing beacons down toward the school down there, where we have a couple planned for this way, but maybe down toward the school might be another thing to do. But I printed out the, it's called the Pedestrian Safety Action Plan. It's probably 60, 70 pages, and it kind of goes over what they, what the DOT has reviewed and their findings, and accidents in urban and suburban areas, and what they would like to see, and ways to structure the projects, and I won't say it's a good read, but it's some information in there that might be useful for us here, and I'm still going through it, and I've made notes in some areas about what might be appropriate for us, so we'll get a little farther into that as we go.
I think we're also looking at perhaps continuing firehouse lanes, sidewalk, there's some empty spots there, and I think it's our understanding so far that this is non-DOT right-of-way projects. So, you know, some of our local sidewalks, such as Benner, Firehouse Lane, we've been pushing around, I think Baxter Road to the community center, so there's a lot of options out there, and I think they'd all be good.
As Jay was talking, yeah, Jay, we did, at one of our brainstorming sessions and maybe a workshop, we came across the funding availability, but then we were looking a little more at the details, and like Brent said, it looks like it, for some reason, it's state money, but not geared to DOT right-of-way work. But like you said, Jay, the Benner Road, I think, is a good one, and we don't have Firehouse Lane quite finished, was one thing we were talking about.
Yeah, there's some gaps there, for sure.
And then, on our agenda tonight, the ongoing Amherst Road, Route 9, not that we would work in the right-of-way, but is there any, some piece of it? We'll talk about that more when that comes up later in the agenda, but I think it's definitely worth going after. We did talk with our engineering firms to see if they had some insight on the grant application itself and different things, but let's keep it on our agenda too, Jay, and I think if we get a piece of 40 million, we'll take it.
Absolutely so.
And while we're talking, we started a meeting, but usually we allow the fire company rep to talk first, so they can get back out to whatever they need to do. So we have, with the new camera system and a few things, Sean, we have a different person here, normally Robbie Fry comes, but this was better to talk into from the podium, and that way you can be heard more clearly by the camera, so. Sean, I know you, but maybe you want to choose yourself and just-
Sean Ball, president, also firefighter, EMT, Red Hook Fire Company. This is our report for August 2017. The Red Hook Fire Company responded to 108 total calls for the month of October. 63 of those calls were EMS calls, 45 fire calls, with 19 of those calls being run to Bard College. We do have a, the requested run sheet that you wanted for fire and EMS broken down, and everything at the firehouse kind of is what it is. We're wrapping up year-end stuff and getting done with the requirements.
Yeah, thanks. And, yeah, we started this routine to talk more and bring in the report, so we talk month to month instead of every couple of years type of thing. It's been working out well, I think, and then what we could do is, we'll take your report. I know it's normally Rob, will you alternate, or?
Well, he's got a, he's got something going on at the firehouse that he can't miss tonight, so.
I think last time you were coming in promoting your food trailer, Food Fest, or how, did you get?
Yeah, oh, it was a, actually a smashing success.
Oh, cool.
We were kind of taken aback by how many people we had for it. We had gotten some good feedback from other fire companies about the luck they were having with it, so we kind of planned, pulled a couple of friend cards, got a couple of bands there, and it, we must have had 600, 700 people at one time. Yeah, it was, it was a huge event. It was very well received, so we're hoping to do more of that in 2018, and we don't make a lot of money, but we make some money, and it's good for the PR community. We love having everybody there at the firehouse, and if we pull a volunteer or two out of it-
That's the thing I was going to say, yeah.
You can't put a price on that. And if anybody wants to volunteer, Red Hook Fire Company.
Yeah, good pitch, good pitch. Yeah, because it's what, about 18 to 24 hardcore, and-
Yeah, right, that's-
It's a-
Our numbers are dwindling, a lot of the hairs over there are getting gray, and we need to infuse a little young blood into the fire company, because it kind of is what it is, young man's game, so.
Yeah, definitely, yeah. Well, thank you, and like you said, normally what we do is let you guys then head out, we don't, unless you want to stay the whole meeting, but-
No, no, we got, I got plenty to do back at the firehouse.
Okay, good, well, thanks for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming, man.
All right. That's the call broken down. All right? If you need anything else, just let us know.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, and just a little housekeeping here, too. When we approve the minutes, I did want to leave, as is our custom, when a village resident, in this case, a former village resident passes away, we tend to leave a page blank in their memory and honor. And in the month of October, Kathy Glick passed away. She's the mother of Nick Herron, who runs Hitchcock and Company Electricians here in the village, but it seemed like it was a sudden thing, and she was waked here in Red Hook, and she was not living in the village at the time of her death, but I thought we'd leave a page blank in her honor. Do you all concur? Thank you. Now, let's see, we were talking, we had Trustee Trapp do planning zoning and talking about a grant, and then he also is our conduit to emergency services, so it was a good segue to emergency services. I see another person walked in, I think it looks like the garden lady, is that you, Barbara? What we're doing, we have a normal routine of business, and unless you want to sit here for the whole meeting, I would entertain letting you speak, and-
I'm waiting for Linda to come.
Do you want to? Okay, okay. So we'll move ahead. Trustee Norris, would you like to give your report?
Sure, I will start with materials management. For the month of October, we sold $3,443 in garbage tags and paid out $1,325.10. We had 6.13 tons of single-stream recycling and 11.28 tons of garbage. As we do every year, we're planning our electronic waste recycling event, which will be Saturday, January 13th. We do this in conjunction with the Town of Red Hook and the Bard Center for Civic Engagement, which provides us the people power to do this, because there's no way we could do it without them. So we'll be working on the flyer for that, which will have the breakdown of everything that can be accepted for that event. Speaking of events, it's been busy. We had Red Hook Halloween on October 28th. A sincere thank you to the merchants who make this event possible. We couldn't do it without them. They provided hundreds of pieces of candy to the children who came out. I don't know what the count was, do you? Someone said 600, which is possible.
Yeah, it's, judging by pumpkins and-
Lots.
Yeah.
We also had a chili cook-off. There were 14 entries this year. It was coordinated and sponsored by Ulster Savings Bank. All the proceeds for that event went to a local charity, Team Nora, so that was a great, a great day. The Red Hook Dog Halloween was kind of rained out, that was the following day.
Kind of were really-
They still did it!
Really?
But they switched it, they didn't use our parking lot. They did it down 199, where the registration and photos were in the Paws Dog Boutique. I saw some pictures of dogs on Facebook, so they did still have it, but it wasn't the big event that they had been hoping for. In years past, they do a parade of dogs in costume throughout the village, and it's quite hilarious. Red Hook and the Chocolate Festival was held November 4th. This is an event run, that is run by the Red Hook Chamber of Commerce, and I think this was their third year?
I think so, too.
Something like that. It's a great event, if you're a chocoholic or love sweets. And then, this is segueing, we, winter is coming up, there's a lot of events going on. Central Claus, which Rhinebeck does, is December 2nd. The Elmendorf does Old Dutch Christmas on December 3rd. There's a group now called Live It Up Red Hook that has been doing the Friday Night Lights. I know that they have a couple of events going on. So we're trying to figure out, do we want to throw our Winter Fest into the mix, which statistically is probably the least attended of the events that we run. In years past, we just kind of piggyback onto the Elmendorf Christmas event that they do, and, you know, we have hayrides and arts and crafts, and the coldest hayride you've ever been on in your life, and we like the tree. It's really a relatively short event, so it's-
Yeah, if I could jump in, Jen. I thought what we do, board members, is that, just talk it for a few minutes. Like Jen said, we were planning for December 3rd, but the first Friday, Friday Night Lights is that Friday, December 1st, and then winter, the Elmendorf, let's see, Dutch Christmas, they call it, right, is also December 3rd, and Central Claus is the 2nd. We always tried to do ours in early December, just to set off the holiday season and try to get people interested in Red Hook and their shops and restaurants and so forth. And years ago, we were the only players in the field, and they were great events, but now if we do have an interested and more active street merchants group, which is separate from the Chamber of Commerce, I don't really want to step into their proceedings if they're so inclined to do it and be independent, which is fine. That's pretty much what we wanted all along, was we would keep things going, and hopefully somebody would pick up the interest and go with it. What Jen was saying there, I had a last-minute conversation probably around 4 o'clock today, Monday. We were trying to push the merchants group to give us some input, because as a board, we need to know if they're using our facilities or our streets. They need to ask us and clear, not that we're big ogres and say no, but it's more, we need to be sure certain health and safety things are complied with and so forth, and ADA, different things when you're in public facilities. But like Jen said, they do have something they're calling SantaCon, which I think is a millennial, wear a red hat and visit the restaurants, more the bar side of the restaurants, to be honest with you. Then that's December 1st, and then they're going to team it up with merchants and get people to come into the stores somehow, something like the Chocolate Festival, I think, where you get enticed to come in. And then December 16th, one of their organizers mentioned a parade, and certain things were letters to Santa dropped off at one of the toy stores in the village, and it also sounded very good, but I explained to them, you know, parades and things definitely require, you know, street use, and quite frankly, in a dark winter, it's pretty hard to get, I think, a safe parade to happen. We could work a sidewalk parade or something very short, and they seemed to understand that. But what it leaves us is, I think it might be overkill if we're doing, if something happened on the 1st, and then they want to do something on the 16th. Ours was more to get the season kicked off, but it seems to me they'd be kicking it off on the 1st, and then following it up on the 16th, and there's only so many volunteers and so many things we can lean on, so rather than try to do too much, I'm thinking we should forego our event on the 3rd, but offer to help them with some design or creative or something, because what we do is, from some supplemental funds in the hardscrabble account, we run the big hardscrabble day, but then we run, we call them the smaller events, the Winter Fest, the Red Hook Halloween, and the Egg Scramble in the spring, and those are 200, 300, $400-type events, but we could move some of that toward them to help them somehow promote their events, instead of all of us being out there trying to do something on a 3rd night in early December. That'd be my thought, and I'm not sure that takes a vote, but I just like, try to see if the people have other thoughts. You know, some of the active players, I think, would just switch gears and then work with the new merchants group, the biggest-
I think some of the people on our, yeah, Kathy Trebel on the Winter Fest, I think, is working on-
Yeah, she would work with either, I talked to her today, too. Ours was definitely geared toward the parent and the kid who's, you know, between 3 and 10 years old, that type of thing, you know, it's a, whereas, it seemed like the merchants are trying to hit a different spectrum, which is fine, and I think if, I'd rather let them target what they want to target and try it, and we'll offer our logistics and different things. Would you all be so inclined? Jay, you won't miss the hayride too much this year if we don't do it?
But they'd be doing like the Santa Claus thing, and the-
They have some variation on that theme.
And the magic dust?
No, no magic dust, that's-
No magic dust.
You really want to do the magic dust, Brent?
We're talking about our tree lighting, actually up near the garden. We, a little segue, it was great fun to do the Santa and the magic dust, but my inclination is, let's let it rest with the merchants, who seem to be pulling things together pretty well, whether they're all on the same page, we're not totally sure, but they can, they can try it. So I think what we could do, we would hear say we're not going to hold our December 3rd. In our regular business section, there's something we're talking about, Montgomery Place, and we can talk a little more there, about other things that we'll be doing around the holiday season, but we could forego the hayrides and the Santa and let the merchants pick up that piece of it. Sound okay, everybody? Okay. Anything else? Jen, from your world, you talked about e-waste, and-
Um, no.
Yeah.
Good.
It looks like your spreadsheet's not running the average for us right now, so if you could put a formula over there, but it looks like-
Yeah, my computer's been acting super wonky lately, so I will see what's going on.
Yeah, yeah. All right.
Did you say you did talk about e-waste?
Yes, she did, January 13th. Which is not that far away, I guess. Now, looks like Trustee Lang is not here. I know I saw a water report in my stacks, if you all give me a second to find that. Yeah, see mine. For the month of October, plant treated 6,258,000 gallons, which is an average daily rate of 201,000 gallons. To chlorinate that, they used 50 gallons of hypochlorite solution, and then we always compare it to the prior year, so in October of 2016, the plant treated 7.035 million gallons, which is an average rate, daily rate of 226,000 gallons, so it's about 25,000 gallons a day difference there. Doesn't seem quite as significant as some numbers we were seeing a month or two ago. And as usual, three samples were sent to Smith Environmental Labs in Hyde Park for bacteriological testing, and all three were returned with a negative result. And actually, I read this tip before, and it kind of made a little more sense than the normal Farmer's Almanac things you see. But it says, "Review your water bill consumption to be sure everything is normal for your household." And these are some cool numbers. On average, Red Hook residents tend to use about 50 gallons of water per person, per day. Doing some quick math, if you have a family of four, your quarterly consumption volume should be about 18,000 gallons per quarter. If your bill seems exceptionally high, call a village so the operator can help locate the source of the extra consumption. And we do that with the new meters, they can actually do really interesting hour-by-hour graphing and consumption reviews, and people would be amazed how much faulty toilet running or certain things running will add up to be. We'd rather not take your money if we don't have to, and if you're using the water, we have to, it goes through the meter, so we have to charge for it. And again, there's a bullet point in regular business, we'll be talking about a variation on this theme, we'll get to that. But anyway, that's the water report, and that's it. Looks like we then have Deputy Mayor Kowalczek on his bundle of reports there. Ready to go?
Yep, I am. Now I'll start with the Village Green Committee's monthly report for October 2017. Current balances of the Village Green Committee's related budget accounts are as follows. Community beautification, a balance of $4,000. Shade tree contractual, we have a negative balance of $6,350. This was to remove and prune trees. The Village Green Committee checking account remains at $4,136.88. This was a very busy month. We had meetings October 20th, 21st, 25th, November 2nd, and November 3rd. These are primarily in preparation for our annual fall planting session, and these involved selecting sites, confirming with property owners, locating the sites, unloading the trees from the trucks that were delivered from the nursery, and also digging holes and checking out with New York Dig safely before we dug. The annual fall planting was held on November 4th in the morning, right before the Chocolate Festival. 18 volunteers, including Village Green Committee officers. Part- Eighteen volunteers, including Village Green Committee officers participated. We all met at the Village parking lot for team assignments and photos. And two team of volunteers planted thirteen trees at five locations throughout the village. These sites were located on Garden Street, Old Post Road and Park Avenue, Kent Road and Richard Abraham's Memorial Park. A luncheon prepared by Kathy Pearson and Sue McCann was held at the Red Hook Town Hall after tree planting. And the Village Green Committee offers a special thank you to all the volunteers and to Michelle Decker of Decker Construction for helping digging the holes and the Red Hook Village Highway Department for all the help and assistance to make the 2017 Annual Fall Planting Day a success. So that was very, I'd say a very good event. Next is the Village of Red Hook Highway Department Monthly Report for October 2017. The Village Highway Department is currently picking up autumn leaves and brush. Residents are reminded to place leaves in a row along the outside edge or curbside of the streets. Place the brush in a separate pile and limit pile sizes to six feet by six feet by six feet. The Highway Department may not pick up leaves if they are combined with brush, sticks and branches due to possible equipment damage. The Village's snow ordinance is currently in effect from November first through March thirty-first of 2018. No parking is permitted on Village streets from eleven o'clock PM to six o'clock AM in our New York State highways, which is Route 199 or Route nine, from two AM to six AM during the same period. When snow and ice removal operations are underway, any vehicle parked or abandoned on any street may be removed by or under the direction of the Red Hook Village Police Department or any responding law enforcement agencies. And costs associated with vehicle towing and stores will be charged to the vehicle's owners. And also, the owner and or occupant of every building lot in the village with an adjoining sidewalk shall remove snow and ice if it were to happen, which it probably will, within 24 hours of a snowstorm. At the direction of the Village Board of Trustees, the Village Highway Department will remove snow and ice left unclear at a cost of two dollars per linear foot. And this cost will be assessed and collected with the next tax levy. The Village Board of Trustees approved the bond resolution on November third. I think Ed will be updating where we stand on this. For the purchase of a new freight liner, dump and plow truck, the bond for the not to exceed amount of one hundred and seventy-three thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars will be supplemented by fiscal year 2016, seventeen and fiscal year seventeen, eighteen budget line items to reduce the total amount to be bonded. And we'll be taking revenue from the general fund balance. Some reserves are surplus that we had from leftover from 2017, eighteen CHIPS budget line, maintenance of street capital outlay, which is a budget line we had dedicated for equipment. Our Highway CD Reserve Fund, which again is specifically earmarked for purchases for equipment. And the Water Fund and also the Snow Removal Equipment Repair and Maintenance Fund. So actually, with all those things that we have, we came up with about eighty-four thousand, five hundred dollars out of our general water fund to reduce the amount, total amount of money that we'll be bonding for. And also proceeds from the sale of the existing nineteen ninety-six International Truck. And the FEMA recovery money from winter storm Sella will be deposited in the Highway Reserve CD Fund when that comes in. The bond resolution, subject to permissive referendum, will be posted, probably has been posted already, in six locations throughout the village and published in the Daily Freeman for public review and comment. Just some general information, the bridge, the Red Hook twenty-five on Broadway over the Stony Creek in the village, actively opened on November third. Scrap metal was sold and reimbursed on October thirtieth for the amount of two hundred and seventy-four thousand, forty dollars. Two, I'm sorry, two hundred and seventy-four dollars and forty cents. That would be great if we got that. So total revenue generated for this fiscal year is one thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars and sixty cents. I mean, we have anticipated that we'd get two thousand dollars for the entire year. We're not even halfway, so we're doing pretty good. Since inception of the scrap metal recycling program in September of 2007, twenty-four thousand, fifty-five dollars and seventeen cents has been generated. And proceeds from this program go toward the purchase of tools and equipment for the Village Highway Water and Materials Management's Department. Businesses and residents interested in donating scrap metal can contact the Highway Department at seven five eight, eight six hundred or the Village Clerk's Office. And the Highway Department personnel will assist property owners by picking up scrap metal upon request. Red Hook Infrastructure and the Inter-Municipal Task Force Monthly Report. Now I'll start with the sewer project. Meetings were held on October sixth, thirteenth, twenty, twentieth and twenty-seventh at the Red Hook Village Building. And we reviewed the environmental assessment of the Red Hook Commons for the Red Hook Sewer Project's proposed treatment plant site, officially called Phase One Environmental Site Assessment, Red Hook Commons Wastewater Treatment Plant Site, Smith Street, Village of Red Hook, Duchess County. And we reviewed the process and procedures for the speedage permit transfer from Red Hook Commons Sewage Works Corporation to the Village of Red Hook. And we also looked at amendments to expand the discharge amount on the speedage permit before closing down the property and transfer. And also the basis of design report reviews and approval by New York State and Duchess County Regulatory Agencies before the transfer permits and property. All one hundred and twenty-seven sewer service questionnaires have been sent to property owners within the proposed Red Hook Sewer Project Service Area. Our engineer, Ed Vopelak, from CT Mail, has been meeting with property owners within the service area to review existing sewer and electrical services and respond to questions from these property owners. The design of the proposed Red Hook Sewer Project is nearing completion. Additional information from site surveys and sewer service questionnaires will be added to the final plans prior to submission to New York State and Duchess County Regulatory and Funding Agencies and prior to advertising the bid documents. We also reviewed the New York State Clean Water Infrastructure Improvement Act grant application. As you remember, we did get a nine hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar grant from the state. This is approximately, it's about twenty-five percent of the proposed cost of the project. We reviewed the final draft of the sewer use law, considering all comments by our attorneys. And we will not be voting on that tonight, by the way. We did review the documents for the conveyance of the Red Hook Commons Sewage Works Corporation. And we're moving forward as fast as we can with all these things. The Red Hook Village Water Project, Phase Two. Meetings were held on October sixth, thirteenth, twentieth and twenty-seventh at the Village Building. We reviewed the other Drinking Water Infrastructure Improvement Act grant. At the application, we did receive two point two three, two point two three million dollar grant award, which is sixty percent of the project cost. So we're looking at, you know, reducing the amount of debt obligation associated with the USDA loan that we took out for the project. So we are discussing our short-term financing with EFC. We're supposed to be closing. Our bond was set to mature on January first. And the EFC Environmental Facilities Corporation, hopefully will be extending it for six months so we can have the grant money in hand prior to closing and move forward with reducing the obligation. A lot of other documents we signed as far as the final submission, which is in my report if you're all interested in doing this. But the, the bottom line is that the Village Water Project was completed fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars and six cents under budget, which is pretty good. So this is our, our third, fourth federally funded project that we've had. Three infrastructure, one sidewalk project, and I believe it's one we've come in under budgeted and under time. So we're, we've got a very good record with these federal grants. And some sad news, too, our colleague that we've been working with for. I've been working for George for about thirteen, fourteen years now. George Popp will be retiring. He's our contact with USDA out of the Middletown Office. He will be retiring at the end of November. So we wish George happy retirement and he certainly deserves, I believe, he's put in forty years with USDA. So quite a time. On the Inter-Municipal Task Force side, I am the Village of Red Hook representative and member. Task Force meetings were held on October sixth, thirteenth and twenty-seventh. And we are currently reviewing the proposed Local Law E that will replace the Red Hook Town Law D. Local Law E considers zoning amendments regarding food truck regulations, formula business regulations and an upper Red Hook Hamlet Business District. We also discussed the municipal solar farms in the town of Red Hook under the provisions of the New York State Community Distributed Generation Program. And this program may relate to the property owners included in the proposed Village of Red Hook Sewer Project Service Area. There's a, there's a project that we're currently looking at that we may save some members of the community money along with powering the municipal buildings and our highway garage with this. So this is something we're looking at. And we also discussed the Town of Red Hook's Planning Board Application Review Process and the Town of Red Hook Design Review Committee Process for a certificate of appropriateness. And finally, we discussed lodging regulations as it may apply to the Red Hook Town Hamlet District and the proposed Upper Red Hook Hamlet Business District. And one more report, the Red Hook Economic Development Committee. Both Ed and I are Village Liaisons, has been attending the meetings. EDC meetings were held on October eleventh and twenty-fifth at the Red Hook Village Building. The items discussed included the Gaslight Motel in Upper Red Hook, the Village of Red Hook Sewer Project Status and Updates of the Grant Awards, and the Village of Red Hook Merchants Friday Night Lights with representatives from local village merchants and their efforts to attract more businesses to the village, or more business anyway, to the village and the effects of food trucks at these events on local restaurants and cafes. On the Community Preservation Fund Advisory Board, which I'm a member of, there were no CPF Advisory Board meetings held during the month of October. The current balance of the Community Preservation Fund as of October thirty-first is nine hundred and eighty-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighty-three cents. On the Town of Red Hook Zoning Review Committee, there were no ZRC meetings held during the month of October. And the Sawkill Watershed Community, there was also no meetings held during the month of October. And that is it.
Thank you, Brent. Okay, that concludes the committee reports. And then before we head into regular business, I'll offer, we had Barbara come in and Linda Lawson. They're from the local garden club. And we have talked in the workshop a little bit about, they had a proposal, I think. Two years ago or so, we got them some water as we were doing some water work on Old Post Road so the garden could grow better. And they were thinking they, they don't plan to put in a greenhouse, at least at this point. But I think they would like to get some power to light up a little bit of what they're doing up there. Maybe we'll let them explain. And they did submit a sketch. And what the folks should know is their garden is located in the Village's Memorial Park, up at the north end of it, along the sidewalk. And it's a nice place to take a little gaze at what they've done each summer. And then what they were looking for is to get some power from, we have some existing panel service breakers there. And we do power some of the lights and different things at the memorial itself, the veterans segment. We used to have some good underground cabling up to some trees we would light periodically. And, but they would want to go a little further, but they've come up with a way to have their fundraisers pay for pieces of it and then some donated labor, is my understanding. So it wouldn't involve any of our budget or any of our staff time directly. And our use of the park has ended for the season, pretty much. Especially if we're not doing the December third, you know, the magic dust and Santa up there. What they're looking at is trenching, with trenching equipment and laying conduit and bringing power from the existing breaker box, apparently adding a new breaker panel. And then taking it up and maybe if you guys could describe a little more what you want in your new arrivals meeting. We're on Panda TV and to get your words best heard, it's better to talk into this microphone once it comes live. And then if you'd like to introduce yourselves and talk from the lectern, if you wanted to say something. Did you want to just introduce, like, say what you were proposing so the board could hear it?
Yes.
It'd be better if you came up and took this. It's already on. It just makes it easier for the, the large crowds to hear you.
We're here representing the Old Dutch Village Garden Club. And we have submitted to the mayor a proposal to run electric power from the veterans' area to our garden. And that way we could light up our sign. And we're thinking we could also put up some Christmas lights, which would be very attractive. So we're just looking for the okay, that our club has raised all of the money for this. We're also interested in putting a bench with perhaps our name on it in the area. We've learned that people will go, that work in the village and eat their lunch there. We also need a trash receptacle because when they eat their lunch there, they oftentimes leave the bag on the bench that exists there now. As I said, we've raised all the money for this. We don't need any money. We just need the approval.
I'm passing on your little sketch.
As far as the bench, would you, would you use one of the benches that we've been putting in throughout the village?
That's what we would like to do. We would like to know what the cost of one of those benches would be.
I had that for you.
Will you do?
Yes, I've been, I think we've installed about twenty-five benches throughout the village.
Yes, we know you have. We've seen them, yes.
I think there's one, two, three, three up in the park right now, up in Memorial Park. So where, where would you put your bench?
We would put it close to where the garden is, with your approval.
And what we've been doing is putting them on concrete pads and bolting them down so it reduces liability and keeps the, the ground from getting worn.
That would be fine. We would do anything that's required.
So I'll, I'll give you the information and the contact people. And I guess, I guess we could order it for them, right?
Okay, that's all good. I have to take this back to the club.
Okay, as soon as I, I have the information in, in my files, so I would have to get it to you. And we have your contact information, I'm assuming.
Well, I know that the mayor does. I think he has both of our phone numbers. We've been in touch.
I'll try to get a proposal from the distributor of the benches, so you have it in writing.
Okay.
And then we'll get you an estimate for the concrete pad as well.
All right. That would be wonderful.
And they're done locally and they're, I don't know if they'll get to it this winter, maybe in the spring, but.
That's fine. All we need right now is the approval to get the wiring put in. We understand we're going to have some kind of warm weather the next couple of weeks. And we have everyone lined up. We're just waiting for the approval.
There's one, one other thing we should check on, too, is, you know, New York Dig Safely would have to be called. But also, a lot of Memorial Park, there's, is under the DOT right of way. It's kind of residual property that was kind of found and, and made when they put Route nine in, as opposed to Old Post Road. So that has to be checked, too, just the right of ways. And if it does sit within the DOT right of way, there's, you know, they would like, the DOT would like maybe a plan like that just to be notified of what they'll be doing.
Well, could you come and check out where we plan to put the wiring so that we're not interfering with?
We can look into that, but that's just, those are some of the, the things that we have to do to make sure that, you know, all the agencies that do have jurisdiction over that besides the Village of Red Hook.
I see. Okay, may I ask when that could be done?
Let's, just keep that in the back of our heads for a moment. Two other thoughts. See, technically, you'd. See, technically, you'd be using power that we pay for up there. So would your lights, or whatever, be on a timer, something we were mitigating?
That can be done, yes.
We'd need some way to also consider as a park general improvement, not just a favor to a garden club. In other words, it's making the park nicer, I would agree. But somehow, we would have to be able to all agree on that, meaning it's, it's enhancing the overall park. Because to us, you're not the village, so we can only really pay money to put these lights on, or lights we're responsible for. And then the other thing I was thinking, just, we didn't mention, but apparently, it'll be done by a real electrician. It's not just their volunteer.
Yes.
It's a local business person would be doing it, so it'll be done properly. And then, I know you have a certain...
The only light that we would want to burn at night would be the light that's going to reflect onto our sign.
Even that, I would say maybe a certain midnight, sometime timed off instead of being on all year round, twenty-four hours.
Okay, well, we can talk to the electrician about that.
Is that something they would have to go through Planning Board?
Well, that's where I was at, like, signs. I think you have very small signs, but the village has certain rules on signs. You know, it's not this board, but it's the Planning Board.
Well, we put the sign up with permission.
I know we don't allow, and you're not talking about that, we don't allow internally lit signs, but you're talking about externally lit.
It's just going to be like a spotlight.
So it sounded like their sign, you went through the process already, like, you'd be using your existing signs, just lighting it up, is what you're saying?
And we wanted to put Christmas lights up.
Yeah, that, that's okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah, it's not really a sign. That's, we're just thinking, you couldn't put a ten-foot sign, welcome to Red... Like, you have to get a, you have to go through it.
No, we don't have any plans to put any big signs or anything.
One more question.
Sure.
The waste receptacle that you had in mind, did you have one in mind that you're looking at, or...?
Well, we would want whatever the village would approve. I believe there's several waste receptacles in the town, in the village, isn't there?
There's some, well, we have one right outside the door here.
Okay.
Those are quite expensive.
Well, we have worked very hard and we have earned all the money to take care of this.
All right.
I think, I almost think there is one in the middle of the park, meaning one of those pole-mounted ones? Seems to me. I've seen one there. They're not the prettiest thing. I don't think it's what you're thinking about, but they're...
The cylinder ones?
Yeah, she had a mesh, yeah. Well, let's just think about this part first. When Brent, when you bring up the right-of-way, do you think that whole finger of park is in the right-of-way? Or just, do you have any mental recollection?
No, the, the southern part, most of that, as it comes to the point there, Old Post, most of that is under DOT right-of-way. And I'm not really sure where that right-of-way is. I know it varies quite a bit, but usually the DOT works with us as far as that goes. And, you know, that may affect where the bench is, and, you know, it's something more permanent. So we'll look at where the right-of-ways are, and if there is, they like to be, the DOT likes to be kept in the loop, you know, just to give approval.
And they will have to be called also for the lights?
Not for the lights so much, but... I know when you dig, before you dig, you have to call New York Dig Safely.
Yes, we wanted to get that phone number so that we can do that. How much notice do you have to give them?
Probably a couple of days.
A couple of days, okay.
Eight-one-one, four-one-one, eight-one-one. You just dial eight-one-one.
Oh, all right, okay.
What you have to do is kind of, what they check for is underground utilities, if there's anything there that you have to do. And so it's just utilities, basically, when you're trenching. We have to do the same thing when we plant trees. So every time we plant trees, we have to call and make sure there's, you know, water, underground electrical, gas, which we don't have. We have very minimal buried utilities here, but, so, but this is something that's required. It is free, you know.
Okay, we'll do that right away.
But you have to kind of flag out where you want to put it, you know, so they can check it.
All right, so we will mark the area then?
The white flags from, you know, kind of the route that you have indicated there, so they can just verify that there's nothing in that pathway.
Can we just use the yellow caution tape to...?
They prefer...
Paint on the ground?
They prefer white flags because...
White flags.
Yeah, because they, people who check for the water put blue flags in and...
Oh, I see.
... themselves, those flags are...
In flags typically.
They sell them at Williams', they're cheap.
You've seen the pink ones that we put on the curbs of the water project, something like that.
Only, we need white, okay.
Or if you can't find white, just spray paint, whatever color you have, white.
So I shouldn't get the ladies making white flags?
No, no, no. They're, they're very inexpensive.
I think you buy like a bundle of fifty, you know, it's like ten bucks, not even ten dollars.
Okay, we'll do that.
I would think, McCarthy, your contractor is familiar with all this.
He is.
Because we do have, like I said, we have water somewhere. It doesn't show on your map, but we don't need anybody breaking through the water mains, so we mark that in blue. So when you call eight-one-one, what happens is a formal process starts, and our teams will go out and mark the water, and Central Hudson will go out and mark any electric. And then we might, any internal electric might be on us to find. I'm not sure that's utility.
So both of these agencies have to do their marking along with our white flags?
Well, your white flags show them where you want to be, and then they check what they might, or might not hit.
Okay, and whose responsibility is it to call those other people?
The eight-one-one call sends me an email.
Oh.
Saying at this address, it needs to be marked. It's also in the Highway Department, turn off the water.
Okay, okay, fine.
We'll check with the DOT on your behalf, and just for the right-of-ways. And if there is a right-of-way issue, we'll, I guess we'll follow up to see what they need as far as... They're usually pretty good with Memorial, Memorial Park. We've done a lot of projects there with, you know, sculpture and that kind of stuff, so, and the benches.
Okay, so as soon as we get those approvals, those three approvals, then can we go ahead?
Well, here's what I'm thinking. Those are pretty much functional steps anybody has to take, whether you're building a new house or putting in a pool, you know, you gotta do that. So why don't you get the eight-one-one going? We have a workshop meeting, coincidentally, this week, Thursday night. We can check that DOT stuff. Like Brent said, it tends to be, my recollection was more the southern end of the, if you call it a peninsula, you know, the park's like an island, the southern end over there.
Well, we're on the northern, of course.
Yeah, I know. So we could see what we know, but just for our board, Dan did look at it, not so much with the DOT right-of-way in his mind, but he thought things made sense that they're proposing.
I seem to remember like a twenty-foot from the, the white line on the edge of the road, back toward the park, is there right-of-way on the north side, but don't hold me to it. We'll try to find the maps and...
Oh, okay.
I think you're past that, where, even where your garden is, so...
But I think if you move, put your flags or your white paint line where you think you want to be, then dial eight-one-one, and they'll start the process.
The bench may be the longest lead item on this.
That's okay. That can even be spring.
Yeah, it could be, yeah.
We just wanted to get the lights out there.
There's, there's an order, then they have to make it and ship it, and, you know, there's a whole process involved.
Okay, that's fine. Okay. The big thing is for the light, so I would like to know how I can contact you.
Well, you can contact the village building or, or the mayor.
Yeah, we would, like we said, do what we just said, call eight-one-one, and we'll do our internal thing with...
We will. We'll do that tomorrow. So how will we know when the agencies have come out?
Usually send us a bunch of papers.
It has to be done by home, probably, it helps.
Oh, it does? Oh, okay. Well, that's, that's good. All right, so can we contact you? Okay. That would be fine. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. All right. So let's go to the regular business piece. Let's see. I had bullet number one, heavy truck update. Quite frankly, Brent touched on it in his report. We did pass the bond resolution, and just to recap, the price is about a hundred and seventy-three thousand. A truck exists and can be delivered shortly. We did pass the bond resolution and found a way to knock off about eighty-four thousand from fund balance and some other line items we have toward it. But we do have to wait the required period as the bond resolution ages, so we're just letting that happen right now. Hopefully, we don't get a monster snow between now and when everything's cleared. But it still is a way quicker return on a truck being here than the other bid options we had that were really, what, six, nine months out to build it and get it delivered, so that should be good. What I would like you to do, let's go to public hearings, Sewer U.S.L., like we said, we had to reschedule that. I think in your packets, we have a resolution in that regard, just so we can do that formally. Let me find mine. What I would look to do is reset that for eleven December, which is our next monthly meeting at seven PM here at Village Hall. So the resolution would be, in furtherance of the proposed development of a sanitary sewer system, the Village of Red Hook has prepared and is considering adoption of a local law establishing the regulation for construction and operation of a sanitary sewer system within the village. And the village board has been presented with and has introduced the draft of local law of 2017, adopting chapter one forty-five of the Code of the Village of Red Hook entitled Sewers. Therefore, be it resolved pursuant to section twenty of the Municipal Home Rule Law of State of New York, a public hearing on said proposed local law shall be held on eleven December, 2017, at seven PM at Red Hook Village Hall. And at notice of the time and place of such hearing, describing in general terms, the proposed local law be published once on or before thirty November in the Kingston Daily Freeman, a newspaper circulating in said Village of Red Hook. So I would offer that as a motion. Is there a second? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Then on the best value law, we said we're trying to modify our procurement. So if we move into this, the RFP stages on the Consortium for LED, LED Light Replacement, we need to modify that section of our Code Two, which requires local law, which requires public hearing. We're calling it, in the blanket format, a best value standard. That's from New York law, and it's been adopted by other municipalities that way. And whereas there is that the village board of the Village of Red Hook intends to modify its procurement process pursuant to section one oh-three of the General Municipal Law with the adoption of a best value standard. And whereas best value is defined in New York Finance Law, section one sixty-three, this gives a little brief description. When awarding contracts, the Village of Red Hook must consider the overall combination of quality, price, and other elements of the commodity or service, including piggybacking, that in total are optimal relative to the needs of the Village of Red Hook. The best value standard may only be used for purchase contracts, which includes contracts for service work, but excludes contracts necessary for completion of a public works contract. So we talked about that. And the village board has been presented with the draft of the local law. Now therefore be resolved pursuant to section twenty of the Municipal Home Rule Law. This is the same text we just read on the other one. A public hearing of said proposed local law shall be held eleven December at seven fifteen PM at the Village Hall. And at the notice of, of the time and place of such hearing, describing in general terms, the proposed local law be published once on or before thirty November, 2017, in the Kingston Daily Freeman, a newspaper circulating in the Village of Red Hook. I would move that we adopt that second public hearing that night. And all in favor?
Aye.
Let's see. What we were talking about, this is originally a reminder that we're going to have a public hearing this week, too, but it's, this one is with regard to a zoning, potential zoning moratorium in the General Business District. And this one's a little longer. Let's see. What we'd like to do, let me just recap the key parts, make sure it's all there. Let's see. Looks like on page one, paragraph, number paragraph one there, it looks like we have to pick a different time than seven PM since we have somebody in already. So let's put seven thirty PM there. And at the top of the page, we'll take out the word special meeting at a, a meeting at the Village Hall was convened a public session at Village Hall on November thirteen. Tonight's not a special meeting, it's a regular meeting. So this is titled Resolution Establishing a Date for Public Hearing Regarding the Adoption by the Village Board of the Village of Red Hook of a Six-Month Moratorium on Demolition and Motor Vehicle Service Stations in the GB District. Whereas a proposed local law entitled, quote, "A Local Law Placing a Six-Month Moratorium on All Applications and Permits for Demolition of a Structure Over Hundred Twenty Square Feet and for Establishment, Expansion, or Modification of a Motor Vehicle Service Station" in the GB, that's the General Business District, has been presented to the village board. And whereas the proposed local law constitutes a type-two action for the purposes of State Environmental Quota Review Act pursuant to six NYCRR, section six-one-seven-five, et cetera. Whereas a public hearing on the proposed local law has been scheduled for November thirteenth, but needs to be republished in the Kingston Daily Freeman. Let's change that wording there. Let's see. But notice needs to be published in the Kingston Daily Freeman. Now there, now therefore be resolved as follows. The Board of Trustees, the Village of Red Hook shall hold a public hearing on December eleven, 2017, at seven thirty PM at the Village Hall, our address to hear all interested parties on said proposed local law. And the village clerk is hereby authorized and directed to publish notice of said public hearing in the official newspaper of said village, the Kingston Daily Freeman, on or before December one, 2017, which is not less than ten days prior to the date of said public hearing. And the village clerk is further authorized and directed to provide written notice to proposed local law to the town clerk of the town of Red Hook, on or before December one, which is not less than ten days prior to the date of said public hearing. And the village clerk is further authorized and directed to refer the question of the adoption of the proposed local law to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development for a report and recommendation thereon pursuant to section two thirty-nine M of the General Municipal Law. The question of the adoption of the foregoing resolution was duly put to a vote on roll call, which resulted as follows. So I'll submit it as a motion, and I'll ask for a second. Any other discussion?
Yes. In the bolded portion on page one, where it says motor vehicle service stations in the GB District, I think you should put general business in front of the, general business in front of that, and then parentheses GB, because it's referred to GB down through, and I don't think general business occurs anywhere, just as a point of clarification, so we know what we're talking about.
So if we state it first up in the bold?
Sure.
Like, so put GB in parentheses, and then general business is what you're saying?
That's fine.
Fully written out?
Okay.
Thank you for that. Okay, so essentially, seven thirty on the eleventh. And I did have a motion, a second, and discussion. We'll go for a vote. Calls for a roll call vote in this wording, so Ed Lundell, I'll vote yes. Kowalczek? And Norris? And Mr. Trapp?
Yes.
So it carries, thank you. Let's see, let's skip to Amherst Road. I had mentioned that other meetings, and a little bit earlier, too, tonight, we do have a meeting set for December one with New York State DOT and the Dutchess County Transportation Council. We're going to talk about a few state highway DOT issues, ranging from that traffic intersection down there, and whether or not we can do anything more proactively. They did say they were putting out traffic counters, but I haven't seen anything myself, but...
I was there today and did not see them.
The other thing, too, recently, in our deluge rainstorms that we've had periodically, we do get some water flooding on that Route Nine South Episcopal Church, Catholic Church section there. I'm going to bring that up at the same meeting. And, but the Amherst Road, I just want to let everybody know we're still looking at options there. And like we said earlier, with that forty million dollar grant that Jay was discussing a little bit, we know it can't work on the DOT. we know it can't work on the DOT highway per what we read so far, but is there something where we get off there right away? Because one of those hangups in the past was the state expected the village of Red Hook to buy and reconfigure the entire Firehouse Lane side of the world, which we're trying to argue maybe is a more modern way to control traffic there than a straight ninety-degree four-way intersection. So we'll keep it after December first meeting, I'll fill you in more on that. Another piece of work I want to do is, the next bullet is Salisbury Bank Line of Credit Continuance. And I put a hyphen for my knowledge and all of you. In particular for the EV, that's the electronic, electric vehicle grant. I think in your packets you should have that. What it is, we've got this tool we've used periodically and it oftentimes just needs an update, meaning so the bank can continue to offer to us. Do you have yours or do you all have one there? I'm dating it today. Authorizing the continuance of a note in the form of a commercial line of credit in amount of two hundred thousand dollars pursuant to local finance law for the purpose of interim funding of public improvements. We'll read through it, then we can talk about it a bit. Whereas the village of Red Hook periodically receives grants for various infrastructure improvements and vehicle equipment purchases that are reimbursement grants where the village has to spend its resources and process reimbursement requests. Whereas these grants are a significant aspect in the village's ability to perform infrastructure upgrades and make certain purchases. Whereas there are needs to reduce the impact on the village's general fund by exercising the line of credit as a bridge loan for the time gap between payment by the village and reimbursement by the grantor. Whereas Salisbury Bank offers line of credit with an interest rate that ranges from one point eight-eight percent up to two percent. Therefore be it resolved, the village board authorizes the continuance of line of credit for two hundred thousand dollars at one point eight-eight or two, up to two percent. The specific purpose and amount utilized in a bridge loan of the obligation is to be stated in a separate specific resolution when the need arises. The mayor is authorized to sign the continuance note and any ancillary documents related to this resolution. The village clerk is directed to attest and affix to such notes the corporate seal of the village of Red Hook. The faith and credit of the village of Red Hook are hereby pledged to the payment of the principal and interest on the note. And I would offer that as a motion, ask for a second, we could discuss a little bit. And as far as discussion, like some of the wording says, for instance, when we bought the parking lot, we knew a grant was coming, we needed to exercise our right and ability to act without disturbing the general fund. Certain things, when we're getting a grant, we never know that. We want to realize the benefits of the grant, but we don't have a fund within, like a budget line that says to pay any grants that might come up until we get reimbursed, so. I think it's a good tool. We only use it as needed. And like we said, anytime we do plan to use it, we pass a separate authorizing resolution, so. I would urge that we continue with this. It's been a good, good tool for us and the interest is, the reason I put, it's a range, they can't predict what it'll be when we might need it next May, let's say. Do it each year.
What's the resolution?
So I offer, Brent seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Let's see. Montgomery Place Holiday Installation. About a month or six weeks ago, I was approached by the curator, director at Montgomery Place who happens to live in a village. And they're looking to do an art slash history exhibit at a place in the village and they're looking at some options. And I thought Village Hall, if one looks at the left side of our room, our left, that wall and toward where the panda man is sitting there, we could use without disturbing too much the function room. They're looking at some cabinet floor-based display cases and they will not pierce our walls, but they would put some hanging displays of some sort. They're looking at the cove molding. I don't think there's enough cove there to hang a wire off, but they came in and measured and so forth. Originally, we were thinking of December third having an opening with them here that would be part of our, our winter fest night. So they haven't, to be honest, they've, they've come in and they've measured and I haven't had a total idea when it could happen, but they wouldn't be on any other walls, no punctures to walls. And I think it'd be a fun thing. They would do, they're thinking of like an opening night with some tea or something where folks would come in. It will not necessarily be holiday-related. I think it's just to essentially promote the presence of Montgomery Place and a lot of the archive things they're finding there. And what they liked about this, it'd be secure when it's not here, when, you know, and other places would be a little more susceptible where you have cameras and certain things, so. I thought it'd be a cool idea, a good use, and they said it'd be out of the way, so we could have it over there.
How long would it be up?
Well, they were talking about a month. Not a long time. But we're working with Amy Houston is the person who, she's a skilled, I think her career, her professional career is this world. So I just thought maybe in the form of a motion, we would, like, so they wanted to have it up by December three and it's getting close to that right now, so. But I just wanted to tell them, we've discussed it as a board and we're okay with it. And then if they do have an opening, we would all get invited and come see it and enjoy it ourselves.
What else are they having besides tea?
Probably be a cookie. Is that what you're looking for? You want a cookie?
Sounded.
No magic dust.
But I think I might just take a consensus from you all. You all okay with it? Mr. Jay, you good?
Yeah, that's fine.
Water grant. Let me find something here. If we could get all your minds thinking about this, what I have on the wall is a chart I created and we all worked on and looked at many moons ago. What we're working on here, audience and folks, is that to pay for Phase Two water, which was three point eight million dollars, we knew we had to do a planned and progressive water rate increase over quite a period of time to get the principal interest payments ready for when the loan came due. And the loan, like Brent mentioned in his report, would be coming due January one, plus or minus, in two thousand and eighteen. And we've been on track and our budgets have been built with this long-term development and analysis in mind. Essentially, we were raising the rates three percent a quarter. So these models show what a typical customer would be paying as it went up. And then the bottom part showed what kind of quarterly number we would need to be as far as gross revenue. And at that point, we didn't know our interest rate from the feds could have been, we were protecting between two and a half and three point two-five percent. It came in at two point seven-five percent is where the number is. The good news is, like we've said a few times, we thought we'd have to pay three point eight million dollars back. Now we only have to pay roughly one point five million dollars back. So in the next December billing sequence, we would have been pushing our rate up another three percent to do our plan to get, to be able to pay three point eight million dollars. I would put out there that I would like to not hit with that next, next rate increase. If one looks at our water budget itself, we budgeted for revenue from metered sales, five hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. And again, that was built to be able to pay back principal and interest on Phase Two. Right now, we're billing about a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars a quarter, so we're in this range. Yeah, I'm here. So if you do that times four, it comes up to like five hundred and twelve thousand. So we're, what we're fine tuning is, in Brent's report, he came up with that we're fifty-nine thousand dollars under budget. We're trying to fine tune the precise number and then deduct two point, well, we'd actually deduct, the grant is for sixty percent of our actual cost, so instead of two point two-eight million, it might be two point two-five million. It's not really significant numbers, but what we would then do is we'd, with our rate increases, we, we still would have, we don't need all that to pay back the loan. So my suggestion is not do the next rate increase. And then also, we've tasked our engineers to find us where, what can we buy and pay for with what now we would have in surplus in the water? You all might remember the water project was always a phased concept. And what we could do is, we've asked our engineers to look at the Fisk, Elizabeth Thompson Graves. You know, what can we do with essentially two point two-eight million dollars worth of project money and move it over there? We don't have that report back yet, but regardless, it seems like we could forego pushing another rate increase out. And the reason it's kind of important tonight is the next billing cycle is December, so. Essentially, the answer I would like us to move toward is, okay, we've got enough rate, we have this wonderful fortuitous and unanticipated, well, I shouldn't say unanticipated, we've, we've had this ability to get this grant come to fruition and something we could not count on or plan on when we built the rate increases. Like we always say, grants are like lottery tickets. You hope and apply and do things, but in this case, we won, so it's all good news. So I see everybody looking at the wall, but essentially, we give everybody a break and I think we can, we can live with it as far as looking at projections. I did some paperwork. I could pull that out. Like I said, the straight meter revenue was five hundred and twenty thousand and on current trending, we're moving toward five hundred and twelve thousand. And with that presumed need being gone, we're going to have the ability to fund some more projects is what I'd like to see happen, not necessarily just sit on or build surplus, but put it into some more infrastructure somewhere. So I'd recommend you hold it the last quarter rate. And I don't think we need to put this into the motion, but the goal would be any surplus would be moved to a redefined Phase Three. So I would ask, while you think, that's the spreadsheet. That was the logic and the history. And it's been two years or so that we've been running the rate on graduate increases. The typical person went from about seventy-five a quarter to ninety-two to ninety-five a quarter. That being said, I offer as a motion that, given the fact that the village of Red Hook has acquired a WIA grant in the amount of two point two-eight million or sixty percent of Phase Two water project costs, we can forego the next quarter rate increase and hold it at the current September quarterly rate. Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. That's good news for everybody.
Extra Christmas present.
I thought we'd go into executive, but let's see, Garden Club, I added them, but they came in and got in there. Oh, I went by that. Yeah. This has to do with, thank you. We've talked about it a little bit. The infamous historic brick wall on West Market Street and the responsibility that we here refer to by Brent in our village code where within twenty-four hours, folks have to clear the walk. I've asked council, and we have talked about it on the board, about doing that option of a seasonal sidewalk there, where we post some signs. The bad news is, I talked to council today and asked for my paperwork on it, but he hasn't quite got it where he could exempt, not exempt, he would put an exemption to the rule for, we had the highway folks measure it's six hundred and twenty-five linear feet there that runs east to west on the wall. But our goal, I'd like to shoot for that for December to have, my gut feeling is we might have to do a public hearing on that. It's like a little blip to exempt that piece of the wall. But he didn't have what I needed for tonight, so we are moving in that direction. And then, let's see. I won't go to executive session now while the audience speak, but executives should be sure it's just an update on the police contract and we'll get back out and then I don't see anything else.
Are we still meeting this Thursday?
I would like to, yeah, yeah. And then see if our lawyer can get us something on that seasonal sidewalk by then. And the Garden Club needs an answer. What else we got? I think we should. And then from the board, any other business that we didn't touch on that's on your minds? From the audience, public comment. What do you guys have out there?
It's in the report.
Yeah, I'll repeat his question. It's one of our regular attendees, Mr. Beekman. He was commenting on the report from the fire company. Asked a question is, is what they submitted, giving us a breakdown. And what I did ask for after the first two meetings that they've come in on and was more black and white detail, like our police report where we can, as board members, look at it. And what he held up, I recognized as what we've seen as what we get at a contract renewal point. It's their software and just so you know, it breaks out personal injury auto accident, then EMS, and then fire calls. So we will be able to analyze and study a little bit. He did concentrate on the types of calls, not the geography of call. Is there, is a, yeah, yeah, but it'll show that. It's, it's a little detailed. Jay and I worked on it in the contract talk phase where one has to manually look at it by address and see. And what we're trying to do is find the proper proration of village cost to town cost and see just what that is. Right now, we, with this data, that's going to help us get there. My thanks. Just in case the cameraman didn't hear it, we were being complimented, we and our highway department for the effective leaf pickup. Yeah, it's late, what, mid-November now and.
Still got leaves on the trees.
Yeah, some trees still have leaves. And then.
Still got leaves.
Yeah, we have, I have, I have a mountain in my yard. My neighbor has a mountain. But thanks. Yeah, they're, they're working hard and we'll pass it along to them. All right. Why don't we move into executive session to talk about collective bargaining? It probably take four minutes is my call and we'll come back out and we'll, most likely, I think we would adjourn the meeting. But cameraman, can you wait a minute and audience, you can decide what you want. So motion is go to executive for executive, for collective bargaining. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're back from executive session. I would ask for motion to return to regular session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, nothing came up that we'll be voting on, but we did our audience public comment. We did our monthly business. We do have a workshop meeting Thursday. I would ask that we look at the bills. I went through them and I don't know if everybody got their signatures on it, but I'd ask for motion to pay bills after audit.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
And then Mr. Kowalczek, do you think we're done tonight?
Yes, sir. I do. And I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn this evening's meeting.
Second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.